We're beginning a bit late, Chair. We'll call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, June 13, 2023, and it is 7:17 PM. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Richardson.
Yes.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Hayes.
Here.
Trustee Perkins.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Schalmoser.
Here.
Trustee Van Neen.
Here.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Agenda item four this evening is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting last month and the Board of Trustees, a special meeting on May 2 and its regular meeting on May 8. Are there questions for the clerk on the minutes? There being none, Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items for A, minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting, May 2, 2023, special BOT meeting, and for B, minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting, May 8, 2023 BOT meeting. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Please have a second.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Schaller, seconded by Trustee Perkins. Clerk, will please call the roll.
Sure. Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Hayes.
I will abstain as I was not at both meetings.
Okay. Trustee Schalmoser.
Yes.
Trustee Van Neen.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes. Wonderful. Before we go further this evening, I just wanted to point out in the agenda that the village allows public comments by members of the public who are physically present at two different times during the regular board meetings as specified on the agenda and that's set forth on the hard copy that's available. Pursuant to section 1-5-8 of the Lake Barrington Village Code, the Chair may impose reasonable limitations on public comments such as time limits and/or limitation on repetitious comments. When necessary, the Chair has imposed a three-minute limit of public comments but intends to utilize a five-minute limit on public comments this evening. Members of the public can also listen to the village board meetings by connecting to Zoom, but those persons calling in via Zoom to listen will not have the opportunity to submit public comments orally. So thank you for that. Agenda item five. We are here to actually reprise something we did socially, informally, about three weeks ago, and that is to pass and honor our prior administrator as we welcome Sharon Peterson, our new administrator. No backsies. No backsies. Because I'm not going to fool her twice. And so I'm going to read the resolution, and I think Trustee Hayes is going to move the question, and Trustee Schaller is going to second it. And this is what we talked about. And then courtesy of our marvelous village clerk, we have a real nice one for framing up here that can go home with you this evening. But before we begin, we have Ms. Paula Schumacher, who is the Administrator in the Village of Bartlett, who is here on behalf of the Illinois Association for Village Administrators and City Managers. So please introduce yourself more formally, but you can go first, and then we'll do ours second.
President Richardson.
Administrator for the Village.
Thank you, Paula, for joining us. of valued service to the Village of Lake Barrington and its residents. And actually, because he's got a great veteran radio voice, I'll ask Trustee Schaller to read this because he's got the right voice for it.
Hello.
My mouth never shuts, so give it a rest. A resolution of appreciation recognizes Karen Dalton Lang for her years of valued service to the Village of Lake Barrington and its residents. Whereas Karen Dalton Lang has diligently and effectively served the Village of Lake Barrington and its residents in a variety of capacities over the course of more than a quarter of a century, including her service as a member and as Chair of the Village's Zoning Board of Appeals and Plan Commission, and as a Village trustee, and finally as Village Administrator. And whereas Karen Dalton Lang has devoted all her training and expertise as a skilled professional engineer in both the private and public sectors, in service to the Village and its residents, in a manner reflecting the highest level of competence. And whereas Karen Dalton Lang's performance as a Village Administrator since 2017 has been at a level which is unsurpassed in the history of the Village. And whereas the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington desire to recognize and express their deepest appreciation to Karen for her leadership, as well as for the time, talent, and sound judgment she has so generously provided to the Village and its residents for the lasting benefit of our community, past, present, and future. And whereas the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington also wish to extend heartfelt thanks to Karen's husband, Art, who has also exhibited great generosity to the Village by sharing Karen's time with the Village and its residents for many years. Now therefore be it resolved by the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington, Lake County, Illinois, that said President and Board of Trustees hereby express the sincere appreciation and heartfelt gratitude of the Village to Karen Dalton Lang for her many years of dedicated service and her numerous invaluable contributions to the Village of Lake Barrington and its residents, presented, read, and passed by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington, Lake County, Illinois, on a roll call vote at a duly-held regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on the 13th day of June 2023, and deposited and filed in the office of the clerk of said village on said date.
Chair would yield to Trustee Hayes to move the question.
So moved.
And yield to Trustee Schaller to second the question.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schalmoser.
Yes.
Trustee Van Neen.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, and in abstention, I know, I speak with authority in this matter, Trustee Burke as well. Thank you. We're going to give you the nice one. We're all going to come down and take a picture with you. We'll all do this, and then we'll sit down and you can tell us what's on your mind. So why don't we all go down there? Sharon, would you take some pictures? All right. Scrunching together. Come on, Art, you're part of this deal too. All right, everybody look at Lisa first. Everybody look at Lisa first. And then look at Art. Yeah, we're here. Yeah. For the brothers. Jim. How does the orange stuff look? You go kind of turn side. Okay. Go away, look at ya. Okay. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you. Okay, Sharon, thanks. We'll go right to the roll.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Art. All right, Art.
Later, Jeff. All right.
So it is with enthusiasm that the Chair will recognize the former Village Administrator.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I gave a longer speech at the Barrington House Conference other few days ago, so you know what I mean. So the town is in good hands with Sharon, and I'm so glad that you showed up for your first meeting and you're coming back. So I wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Oops. We welcome your continued advice and counsel, Karen. You have a lot of institutional memory, and we would welcome your continued coaching. And please thank Mayor Wallace for letting you play a little hook and come up here.
I will also tell him that you took a picture.
That's right. That's right. God bless. Thank you much. The, okay.
Wonderful meeting.
You're going home to drink wine. I know. You're going home to drink wine. Before we continue with Donnie's report, just one item under number four regarding the minutes. We had a mistaken version of the proclamation on Jewish American Heritage laws. They had the wrong language at the time. It was since corrected. I'm going to just pass this down to Jim DePeter. Make sure this is the one that's actually in the records. Yeah. And I have it in digital format, I think, too, but if you need it, just make sure it matches what you had. Because what happened in that last paragraph is somehow language from another proclamation got in there, and it was kind of awkward. So this corrects it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Chair would like to ask Donnie Strino of Fidelity Consulting to come up. Donnie's no stranger to this board, and they finished the session. Looks like they passed a budget. And give us the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Sounds good. So thank you so much for being here, allowing me to represent the Village of Lake Barrington in Springfield. Really enjoyed working with Karen, and I really look forward to working with Sharon as well. So as the mayor said, the legislative session concluded on May 27. A little late. It was supposed to conclude on May 19, but they were unable to get their act together in time. So actually, to be specific, the Senate concluded on May 26, and then the House at about 3:34 a.m. on the 27th. They did pass a budget. One of the good news, something that Karen and the mayor and I and BayCog and everybody worked on was to increase the Local Government Distributive Fund, or LGDF, which was 10% and has been reduced. Now it's been increased, not anything really to write home about, but money is money. So it went from 6.16 to 6.47. So about 30 basis points of new money will be coming to the Village of Lake Barrington every, really comes every month. So it's about, it's a $50.6 billion budget. And so it's sizable, it's balanced, it's all those things, and for the most part, it's pretty reassuring. So again, it went from 6.16, is what it was, to 6.47. That's the increase in the Local Government Distributive Fund. That doesn't mean that we'll stop pushing for it. Representative Anthony DeLuca out of Chicago Heights, who was a former mayor of Chicago Heights, really is leading the charge, but there was a ton of buy-in and support from mayors and managers across the state that really did a great job in articulating why the cities and villages should be entitled to their money back. One other, there was one other bill that was somewhat note that I wanted to bring up. There was Senate Bill 1963, and this is a bill that for non-home rule communities such as the Village of Lake Barrington, it would...
No, we're home rule.
Oh, you are? Oh, great. Sorry. I guess I assume, I didn't know that, actually.
I had enlightened predecessors.
Yeah. Not by statute, though, right? By referendum.
By referendum.
Yeah. It would have to be, I assume. Right? Good. So doesn't matter. But there was a bill that allows the service occupation tax to be allowed for non-home rule communities. So the other thing about the LGDF that was important is when the governor made his budget address, and state is a state address, in February, he specifically said that he would not increase the LGDF. So again, a lot of work went in between February and May 27 to ultimately convince the governor that the LGDF was worthy of his support. Other than that, just globally, there were two new members or leaders elected. As we all know, the census was this year, and all 118 House members and all 59 senators were up for election. And on the Democratic side, the Speaker and the Senate President remain the same, Chris Welch and the Speaker, and President Donovan Harmon in the Senate. But the Republicans both changed. The minority leaders both changed. So unfortunately for Lake Barrington and for me, Dan McCaughy, Senator McCaughy, who was the leader, is no longer the Senate Minority Leader. It's a guy by the name of John Curran out of Lamont-Lagrange area, a good guy, very have a good relationship with him. Chair probably knows him well from her days. So I really like John, but unfortunately, Dan was very helpful when he was leader to Lake Barrington, and so I will work with John and continue to work with Dan for funding for the Village of Lake Barrington for its projects. And in the House, another person, Jim Durkin, would also, did not seek reelection as leader, and a woman named Toni McComby, who actually also was a former mayor from the Quad Cities area, a town called Savannah. She was the mayor of Savannah. She was elected minority leader. So two new Republican leaders to work with this year, and I think that's important. I mentioned the McCaughy part because with next year, 2024, being another election year, I think that will be the year that some capital projects will be included in the budget, and where Sharon and I and we'll work together to try to identify projects that are important to Lake Barrington and hopefully get those funded.
Yeah, in fact, that's an excellent point, and I'll just reiterate it for the benefit of the trustees. Grants really work in two basic buckets. This is oversimplified, but one are the grants that come from advocacy where specific policy decisions are made by the legislature to award grant funding on a particular basis. Donnie has been very successful over the years with that. The other is from the ability to write very compelling and persuasive grant applications to ongoing existing programs, and Sharon's had great experience there. So it's my hope sometime between now and the end of July to have Donnie and his partner Brian Daley come up, and Sharon and the three of us can have dinner and talk about how one plus one can equal three on the grant stuff.
And I don't know, I should have asked Karen, but I can, when we meet with Sharon, I believe some of the money that we've appropriated may still be trying to work its way to us.
I believe there's a small portion left of what Senator McCaughy had secured that still hasn't, I think.
I think so.
Peggy, do you know?
I was getting rid of my report. Yes, it's the DECO.
The DECO, yeah.
Yeah, so we did get an email from, getting her name, Department of Economic and whatever.
Commerce and Industry.
Yeah, basically just saying some paperwork for $30,000 has been appropriated. So I have sent the paperwork in.
Great. So that's great. So and again, that's something that I can help with.
That's about two years ago, apparently, or something.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, and she applied to this, she was, the woman was very helpful. She said, I just applied for this, for any infrastructure, you know. And so we applied towards the hill size question.
Excellent. So that's exactly something that we can work on. It's the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. But DECO is the anachronism. So, yeah, so that's great. So those are the things that I look forward to working with Chair on. In general, the fiscal budget for the state of Illinois, the $50.6 billion that was just passed and appropriated begins July 1. We will not be back in Springfield subject to anything that may happen over the summer session by the call of the Chair, either leaders of the Houses or the Governor, until October 27, which is the scheduled veto session. And that is to deal with, traditionally, that was to deal with only bills that the governor vetoes this summer. So and I don't believe he has vetoed anything yet, but I think he has made mention that there were some bills he was intending to veto. He signed a bill today about banning books at libraries, so that you probably saw. So he started to sign those, he started to sign bills that has come to his desk, and but again, I don't believe he has vetoed anything. So really, I'd just like to open it up to questions.
Yeah, Chair would recognize trustees for purposes of questions. Trustee Schalmoser, any questions you'd like to ask?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Schaller.
Just what do you foresee perhaps in the next session that might be impactful on municipalities in the suburban Chicago area, including the Village of Lake Barrington?
So it's a really good question. There's a new mayor in Chicago, as we all know. Chicago has a lot of needs and asks. I would say, I mean, the same things, you know, for all of us that have been involved in municipal government for Solhag, the same things, unfunded mandates, any encroachment upon the village's or municipality's abilities to manage their own finances and within their four borders, and the LGDF. So I, you know, I think those things that always come up are going to be the big, the same ticket items. Hopefully, again, it will be less controversial because in the past even number of years are usually easier legislative sessions because they don't want to put their members on tough votes like target members. So and as we don't, I mean, Senator McCaughy had a tough race. The districts were redrawn this time, so this was the first time that everybody ran in a new district. And, you know, if you're a rep, you're up in that same district now. I mean, I was with someone over the weekend, the slating session has started already. They're going to start slating people, and petitions go out August 1, then they're due back. I mean, so it's fast. Basically, if you're a state rep or a congressman, you're running every 13 months. So and same with the senators, a third of the Senate, when they get elected every 10 years, they draw numbers. So you either draw 4-4-2, which means you serve four years for, 2-4-4, or 4-2-4. So if you drew a two-year term, and the first thing, you're up again like everyone else from the hot side.
I, next month, and I go at my own expense, I'm speaking to the UK equivalent of the US Conference of Mayors. And like here, there's the bipartisan US Conference of Mayors, and then there's subsidiary groups, Democratic Mayors Association, Republican Mayors Association. So I'm going to talk to the LGA Conservatives, the Tories. And I was explaining this system to them about redistricting and about 4-2-4, 4-4-2, and they looked at me like I was on drugs.
They literally could duck the ladder. They pull names out of hats.
Yeah, it's astonishing to people, most Americans don't know how this stuff works. You talked about the swing seats. How many swing seats are there really?
So it's another really good point.
And are any of them in the region?
Yes. There is a supermajority of, in both houses. So Democrats control more than, you know, supermajority, more than two-thirds.
Overriding.
Yeah, override. So they, an override of the governor's veto, in both houses. So I think there's 78 Democrats in the House and 40-some, 39 in the Senate. So it's a lot of members and a lot of people to protect. So there will, there are some, and to Mayor Richardson's point, you know, the way they draw these maps is the way I always describe it, is like a finger. The city of Chicago starts here, and they draw these fingers up. So that's why you'll have Democrats that have parts of the city running in Lake Barrington, you know, and that's why, you know, I think, but yes, there are. I haven't done a deep dive yet in the politics of which seats are vulnerable, but I would say at least a dozen just based upon the most recent results from November of 2022.
Thank you.
I guess one final thing. Do you see the state legislature concerned about the general exodus of people from Illinois?
So it's a great, another good question. The governor doesn't really seem to think that it's an issue. I think they, if I'm not mistaken, they had a, we had, the state had a pretty good year income tax-wise, and there was, they cogged for the Finance Committee on Financial Accountability. Basically said there was more money than they had. That's why they were able to balance the budget somewhat easily. But I mean, you can't argue with the numbers. I see where you see New York, California, and Illinois, in that order, have had the most amount of people leave the state. So the people coming in aren't paying taxes. So it will definitely be, it's going to be a concern. And, you know, there's a little bit of ARPA money left, the American Recovery Act money. Same with the city, got some money for the migrant issue. And I mean, the state of Illinois appropriated half a billion dollars in medical health just for, and the city did 50, and it got to July, gets to July 1, $50 million gets the city to July 1. So that's not sustainable as well. So yes, it could be, I mean, you may see some type of tax increase, or, you know, the governor took his shot with the progressive, you know, the constitutional amendment to change of progressive taxes. It was unsuccessful. He's been really reticent to touch that again, but at some point, you know, you don't have to be a math major, no, you can't spend more than you may, and then you bring in, so.
Trustee Perkins.
Thank you for your report. No questions. Thanks.
Trustee Hayes.
Yeah, I have to go there, and I think President Richardson knows. The pension crisis, it's still the big thing that tenet was four years ago, it was 10 years ago. What's the, what's the discussion there?
I mean, there's a lot of discussion about it. They made, they're making the pension payments, you know, forever. The Governor doesn't really seem to think that it's an issue. I think they, if I'm not mistaken, they had a, we had, the state had a pretty good year income tax-wise, and there was, they cogged for the Finance School, the Committee on Financial Accountability, basically said there was more money than they had. That's why they were able to balance the budget somewhat easily. But, I mean, you can't argue with the numbers. I see where you see New York, California, and Illinois, in that order, have had the most amount of people leave the state. So and the people coming in aren't paying taxes. So it will definitely be, it's going to be a concern. And, you know, there's a little bit of ARPA money left, American Recovery Act money, same with the city, got some money for the migrant issue. And, I mean, the state of Illinois appropriated half a billion dollars in medical health just for, and the city did 50, and it got to July, gets to July 1, $50 million gets the city to July 1. So that's not sustainable as well. So yes, it could be, I mean, you may see some type of tax increase or, you know, the Governor took his shot with the progressive tax, you know, the constitutional amendment to change the progressive tax, it was unsuccessful. He's been really reticent to touch that again, but at some point, you know, you don't have to be a math major, no, you can't spend more than you may, and then you bring in, so.
Trustee Perkins.
Thank you for your report, no questions, thanks.
Trustee Hayes.
Yeah, I have to go there, and I think President Richardson knows. The pension crisis, it's still the big thing that ten it was four years ago, 10 years ago. What's the, what's the discussion there?
I mean, there's a lot of discussion about it. They made, they're making the pension payments, you know, forever, the way they would balance the, it's a really good point, because the way they would balance the budget is, okay, we're 400 million short, let's just not make a pension payment this year, and then we all miraculously found 400 million dollars. So, I mean, that happened for a really long time, I think. Every year, Bogovic, and I believe Quinn at the end started to make some. And so, and, you know, this Governor, to, you know, to his credit, is making the pension payments, the bare minimum, they're not giving anything more, and it's a really big issue. They talk about it, they have no way to solve it, because every time they pass a bill, a few times I should say, that they pass a bill, the Illinois Supreme Court overrules the legislation and says that it was unconstitutional. For, you know, a few years ago, not a few years ago, a lot of years ago, they did change the pension system. So I believe it was almost like 10 years ago that everybody that got a job or was elected after January 1 of, I can't think of the date, but let's say it was 2008, went into what they call Tier Two. So they did create two different tiers of pension systems, and my understanding is that they can't even keep up with the payments on Tier Two. Eventually, Tier Two retirees are going to become a problem, and so they may have to create another tier.
Yeah, it's a concern. I'm very familiar with it. I sat in front of appropriation, it was five years ago. It's going to bury this state, and so.
And City too, City's got the same problem.
Yeah, keep your eye on it, because, I mean, it's going to have dealt down effect to every village, every community, every taxpayer, and it's unfortunate. But thank you, thank for your insight there.
Under the Constitution of the United States, cities can declare bankruptcy, states cannot.
Yes.
And so at some point, there's a very bleak moment of reckoning. I saw a bumper sticker the other day when I was headed to O'Hare that was kind of chilling, and it said, "The last one to leave Illinois, turn off the lights." And it, it's daunting. I will be back in touch with you and Brian and Sharon. I want to recognize Trustee Van Ryn for a question in case she would like to ask one.
I do not have a question, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Therese. And I look forward to getting together with you and Brian and Sharon and.
Likewise.
Go Irish.
Yeah.
He's got to root for Clemson next year. Yeah, that's the problem.
I woke us up.
Okay, Agenda Item.
Excuse me, Agenda Item 6 this evening is the first opportunity in the agenda for members of the public to address the Village Board on non-Agenda Items. There is no one here, so no one is seeking recognition for that purpose. Agenda Item 7 is the Consent Agenda, and these are matters that we discussed in the Committee of the Hall. Are there any further points, any further questions or comments that anyone would like to make on the Consent Agenda Items? A, Bay Cog Proposed Budget. B, Concerts at Friar Farm. C, Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Depositing and Investing of Funds and Authorizing Certain Village Officials as Signatories. D, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lake Barrington Village Code, Section 1-10-7, quote, fees, charges, and other amounts payable to the village, quote, Section 2-3-2, quote, definitions, quote, and Section 2-3-6, quote, classification of licenses. E, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Village of Lake Barrington Village Code, Section 1-5-3, quote, Village President, quote. F, Consideration of a Resolution Appointing a New Director and Alternate to SWALCO. G, Consideration of a Resolution Appointing Margaret M. Hirsch as IMRF Authorized Agent. H, Consideration of a Resolution Designated Signatories on Depository Accounts of the Village of Lake Barrington. I, Consideration of a Resolution to Approve a Temporary Use Permit for Special Events, for what, for Selectioneer Boutique. And J, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lake Barrington Village Code, Title 11, quote, Trees and Plants. And I am going to move that we take Agenda Item 7J and table it until the July meeting pursuant to our discussion in the Committee of the Hall.
I would also note that the temporary use for the selection.
Oh, you got to turn on your red button.
Yeah, I would also note that the temporary use for the selectioneer is going to be, as was discussed in Committee of the Hall, amended to reflect the fact that the insurance would be provided by the applicant, not by the property owner, and their insurance would cover both the property owner, the selectioneer, and the village.
So Chair would like a motion, what's, Chair would like? Chair would like a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Agenda Items 7A through H as listed, I as amended by council, and J to be tabled until the July meeting. May I have that motion, please?
Still moved.
By Trustee Hayes, may I please have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Perkins, thank you both. And I will ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Schommer, Trustee Van Ryn?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, marvelous. Agenda Item 8 this evening is the Treasurer's Report, Mrs. Hirsch.
Good evening.
Hello, hello.
It's not working now, but we'll talk like really loud.
Do you want me to step over here so, do you need to record this?
Yeah, that's why I turned it on. The only way that the video will have sound is if it comes from on my phone. So I'm hoping that'll.
Can I sit here as opposed to sitting with the chair? I was. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to probably those, I'm going to bring my glasses because it's a little farther from my vision. I'm a grandmother, okay. All right, so sit back, relax, you have the final fiscal, full fiscal year in front of you. I was asked by the trustee of finance to be brief, but it's very hard when there's a lot of information here, Trustee Hayes, so.
But you're so good that you know how to be brief.
All right, well, I'll start by saying that this is the first year we've had our full quills at this meeting. I was a little bit hard in our accounting department, I think I sent back the four or five revisions back to the office, because I wanted to get all the quills done. They have to get done anyways for the audit, so we had the time to do them. So this is, this should be the final year. Most times when you see this report, at this point, there's still lots of work to be done on it. So we'll look to start out with the Flash Report on Page 2, and you can see we have assets of $6,480,000. We have current liabilities of $2,472,000, and equity is at $3,576,000. Our total revenues for the 12 months are $4,257,000. Our expenses are at $3,543,000, giving us a net income of $714,000. We had a very good year, if it's not obvious to you there. Just to compare, that's compared to this point last year, there was $475,000 was net income, but once again, we pull out our sort of extraordinary items, which is mostly road work, and last year there were a lot of Featherling project expenses, and I've also added back in the grant revenue that we've applied to that, just to get really come to a, to come to a net income ordinary number. And you can see that a regular operation, net income or loss was $910,000, compared to last year was about $1,130,000. So a little bit down from last year. And we did talk about this quite in depth at, through budgeting. I'm not sure, you know, if we have questions, I have all my report, but, you know, maybe it doesn't make sense to build on these a second time, you know, in terms of what happened in, you know, budget to actual and so forth. I will say that, you know, our sales tax was about $100,000, which is a bit surprising to me. What was more surprising is that half of that came from new businesses, unlike Barrington. So that's not something that we went out and searched out these businesses, we just, it happened because of our.
It, I'm going to, since he's not here, Lord knows, I hate to say anything nice about Burke in front of him, so I'll say it in his absence. It's not a surprise. We've had a very deliberate plan to grow businesses that are consistent with our brand, and we've had great success because an extraordinarily talented guy named Andy Burke knows how to talk to those folks, because he's one of them. And I'm a big believer in the old adage, there are no accidents. This is not an accident. We have a beautiful amount of publicly accessible open space. That's not by fairy dust. It's because serious people made serious efforts and thought about it from a strategic standpoint. And the business results, that data is so meaningful to me, Peggy, because it so greatly validates the leadership of the board, and Andy in particular, and I can tell you, because I'm copied on a lot of these things, Andy has worked like a Trojan on these things, and so this is tremendous validation. Now, I don't know that he's going to watch this on TV, so don't snitch me out and tell him that I was being nice to him in his absence, but this is a great tribute to Andy Burke, and I can't help but say that to this board and prior boards, we set the table and he did a great job executing.
Absolutely, and it's a wonderful place to do business with the village, I believe. So we will turn to the Budget to Actual Report, and that is, and I know my page numbers might be different than yours. I have Page 12 and 13.
Is that what the little circles on the bottom?
Correct, absolutely, right. So you can see on Page 1, our revenues are really close to budget, and that was 105% were actual to budget, so we're very close there. Where we saved a lot of money is on the expense side, so our expenditures are 86% actual to budget. And we did talk about this at, through budgeting, there were a number of projects that we did not undertake. You'll see there's placeholders for economic development, we did not spend, there was gateway sign, one gateway sign we didn't do, there was stonework at Featherling, we did not do the EV charging station, so there's a number of reasons, those things were in the budget, that we decided not to do them. And then we saved some money, some things came in under contractor bids, which was pretty amazing. The water tower came in, painting came under the bid, and also did the road work. So that's kind of where our savings were. It's a little embarrassing to have budgeted a net loss of $23,000 and to have a net income of $700,000 as the financial person here, but it's a good, it's a good direction to be, and each of those can be explained. So I don't want to sound defensive, but there's reasons why all those came in as they did. So the good news is, in the budgeting process, which was like three or four months ago, we did revise all that, we work with a new number. We work with a $680,000 net income number, so we did all our, you know, our looking forward in terms of fund balance, we're actually, you know, right on. So our fund balance is ending up about 16 months, 16.4 months, and I think in our budgeting process, we would be 16.2 months. So I feel good about that, because our long-range planning was based on real accurate numbers, so in terms of how that goes. So Page 14, 15, we do this once a quarter, and this is just recapping where all the road maintenance dollars, the non-MFT road maintenance dollars were spent. You can see that, you know, the first one there is Chicago Land Paving, and that's $395,951, and that is, there's been two pay requests for Hillview Hillside, so that's, that project I believe is getting close to completion. A Cuba Township, to the tune of $37,798.48 to a number of, you know, small projects for us, and then we have the monthly contract with Cuba Township, which came to $146,534. And then some, you know, snow services from Durrin, that's to, you know, to the sidewalks in Pepper Park, and then some other larger ones. Geski and Sons, this was the pay request from, the last pay request from a 2022 road program, so $119,815, and then just some little stuff to the Treasurer's Office for, you know, signal maintenance. So in total, we spent $736,638.80 on non-MFT road maintenance in fiscal year '23. So I'm going to move on from the General Fund unless there's any questions regarding the General Fund before I move on. Okay, Page 16 is the Water, is the Waterfield Tax Fund, and just a quick recap there, we do end up the year with $181,000 in net current assets. You can see on the Budget to Actual Report, which is Page 19, we budgeted revenue really good, you know, $264,873 was the budget, and the actual was $264,728. That's pretty good. And then our expenditures is just a fraction of what we budgeted. We budgeted $800,000 and we spent $779. So we have no plans to spend any money in this fund next year as well. We'll keep building up that fund balance and use that two years out for road work. Page 20 is the Water Sewer Fund, is the balance sheet for the Water Sewer Fund. We have net assets in there, net current assets of $1812,000. That's important to hang on to that for large future repair work, you know, in that fund. You can see on Page 21, the balance sheet, we're showing a $94,000 loss in there. And I will, I do like to work with Sharon, excuse me, this year to kind of probe more into this. That's not sustainable. We weren't anywhere around expenditures this year and to have a $94,000 loss, which means we're not covering the cost of maintaining the fund. We need to look at that over the next, this coming year, so we'll figure that out, what's going on with our billing versus our treatment costs.
Do the, do the business ratepayers, and Jim, you may know this, do the business ratepayers, I mean, they pay for this, right? It's not, residents are on well and septic, so it would be the businesses in Pepper Park on this, and so it's probably worth a conversation with Andy when he comes back from his anniversary trip.
Yeah, we need to work with Fox River Grove too, and, you know, find out, their treatment services have gotten much more expensive, and our revenue hasn't gone up much with them, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to pronounce as much as just raise a conversation that I think you and Sharon and Andy and maybe Jim, maybe Rich too, can have. I will not contribute anything meaningful to that, so I will step aside. But, you know, we routinely, for example, with residents, we pay for refuse and recycling as a way of giving, it's part of the value proposition back for the taxes paid. Right now, the losses are essentially a subsidy or a benefit back refunded, de facto tax rebate to the businesses, because they're not paying for the, they're covering the rates.
Yes, it's going from the fund balance.
Yeah, so I completely agree with you that it's not sustainable. So the question really becomes, what is the best way to address this? I'm always reluctant to shock people with a cliff effect.
Well, I think it's important to have a rate study, but if you look at what happened this year versus last year, our treatment services through Fox River Grove were actually less, our revenue was more. So that's, that really begs for conversation with Fox River Grove. So I think that's where to start.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and then we'll certainly involve the Andy if there's a discussion with adjusting, you know, I think we should do a rate study and see where that's going.
Yeah, I am, one of the organizations that I've been very active with, more because of the groundwater recharge concerns that we have, because residents are on well, private wells, is I'm an active member of the US Conference of Mayors, Mayor's Water Council, and the staff in Washington for the Mayor's Water Council at the UCM is really remarkably first-rate, and they've been there a long time, so they know this stuff cold. One area where I can help is arrange for a call. For you just to tell them this, I don't know that they have a reaction that's useful, but it's a resource we got, and I'd like to at least examine whether they can provide any insight.
Absolutely.
It's rare that something is a case of first impression, I'm sure other communities have faced this, and they may have some ideas on how to evaluate this, so that when we go to Fox River Grove or just look at the operations, we may have informed questions that come from other people's experience prior to this.
Absolutely.
So get after me after the July 4.
A lot, but Sharon's going to have to sort of organize this, I think.
Dr. Richard Anderson at the US Conference of Mayors and Ms. Judy Sheehan from the US Conference of Mayors, she's a badger, she's a cheesehead. Yep. And they're very talented, so, and sometimes you can even get grants from the EPA for stuff like this. I have now exhausted my knowledge.
Okay.
I do that a lot.
You're still a gaudy, yeah.
But no one wants to come back to me on this, because I, what I don't want to do is have somebody in the visitor park open up a water bill and have a heart attack.
I totally understand, right, because some of the businesses are, they're very small. I mean, they're just very small. But I don't think we should let this go another year without spending some time on it.
No, no.
So, okay. Okay, well, then we can move to Page 24, which is the Open Space Fund, and I just put this in here once a year. There's no activity in this fund ever since we, there's really, all it does is collect the property taxes and pay the bond interest and principal twice a year. Just as an FYI to you, the outstanding bond principal is $3,710,000, and the last payment is on October 15, 2037. So there's some time left to service this bond. But that's just in here once a year to show you. But that's just in here once a year to show you that, just the assets in that fund. Okay, so that's all I have until I discuss the accounts payable. Any questions?
No, thank you. I also want to prove to you that I'm listening.
Okay. Well, I hope you're sitting down, because we're spending a lot of money this month. I don't think I've ever spent this much money in my 10 years as treasurer, quite honestly. So warrant A, and I apologize, there's just a lot of really unusual.
What page are you on?
I'm on the warrants, warrant A.
The little circles on the bottom.
I don't have page numbers, but you're on warrant A.
Okay. Oh, here it is, got it, got it, got it.
Got it, okay.
Page 26 in the little circle, page 104 in the document.
Okay.
Got it.
So the first one is Apex Window Works, and that's the second payment of $5,226.20. If you recall, we had a lot of leakage in the community room, and this was approved by the board and actually in the budget. So this is the second payment that work is done. I believe there's still some painting or something to get done in there. I don't think it's quite finished. Area well construction for $939,976.99. That's the first pay request for the 2023 road program. So they're well underway in that program. Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce for $1,000. It's not a very big amount, but it's something very new this year. That's going to be an annual expense going forward, and that's to be in the Pepper Park Retail Association membership, and Sharon might have more on that later. Blue Sim Ecological Services for $3,000, that's new plantings of the gateway sign. That was in the budget and that was approved by the board. Chicago Land Paving for $283,466.74, and that's the second pay request for the Hillside Hillview project. Cuba Township for $29,790, and that's paving for the trail at Featherling Park. The board approved that back in January at the board meeting. Gov HR for two invoices totaling $14,785.20, and that is the second and third payment for the recruiting of our new village administrator. So that total payment came to $22,585, just slightly under the budget, which was $23,500 for those. HR Green, we have two invoices. The first one is $7,353.50, that's construction oversight for the road program. And then $23,274.90 for construction oversight for the Hillside Hillview project. I apologize, I'm starting to talk faster, because I'm afraid you're falling asleep on me.
No.
Peters Notman Sons and Misses for $6,815, and that's for the water well replacement at Fire Farm. This all indicated Kevin's need to have a higher spending authority, because he couldn't approve this and we needed it, and it was kind of an emergency basis. It was during the drought a couple of weeks ago, and our gardeners were very anxious. And, you know, it's not really a budgeted expense, but there was a $5,000 placeholder in that fund, in kind of a miscellaneous amount, so it's basically covered there. Okay, we are getting very close. Phone Line Inc.'s first, or Phone Lines Inc. for $16,475, and that was the parking lot electrical pole replacement, and that was approved at the April board meeting. So I believe that work is done, Lisa? I think that's pretty much done. That's his final payment, though.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yeah, no, no. But it is, that's, that's the final payment. And then we have one invoice left, and that's to discuss on warrant B, and that's Chalmers Street Consulting, this is new and dear to Kevin's heart, for $8,900, and this is the project initiation phase fee for the building permit automation project.
Yes.
It's like a tongue twister. And that contract was approved May 2nd, board meeting, and the $8,900 we do at completion as well.
To paraphrase that great philosopher, Katie Scarlett O'Hara, "As God is my witness, I am going to get this thing solved."
So that's all I have, but happy to answer any questions. I've reviewed every invoice on the warrants, and they're there for your approval.
Are there questions for the treasurer? It is a lot of money by historical standards. It was a, when I saw it, I did gasp a little bit. But then I felt good, because I didn't have anything to do with it, and you couldn't yell at me for spending too much.
Where's Karen? Because it was, it was off here.
Yeah, no, 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 no. That's right. Do the principal thing in government, throw your predecessor under the bus.
That's all the money we have, though, so it's all good.
Thank you. Any questions for the treasurer? Okay, then are you ready for me to move the questions, then? Anything? Then Sharon would like a motion to approve the financial statements, 8A, approved financial statements as of April 30, 2023. 8B, pay bills in the amount of $1,624,551.87, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated June 13, 2023. And C, pay bills in the amount of, Lisa, help me? Thank you. As listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated June 13, 2023. May I have a motion to approve and block?
So moved.
By Trustee Hayes, thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Perkins, thank you both. Okay, number nine. Oh, thank you, John. I did wrong. This is not unanimous consent. This is not voice vote. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Hey, Trustee Hayes.
It's my dad.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller? Trustee Shaw Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan? Trustee Van Ryan? She's still on? Didn't we lose her?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
For the background.
President Richardson.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and thank you for catching my error. Agenda item number nine, Ms. Peterson's First Administrator's Report. Welcome again. We are delighted you're here.
Thank you very much. I have two brief items this evening. The first one is the Nexsite Agreement. That actually was on the warrant list originally for payment for $8,000 for the following year. Trustee Burke and I had discussions over emails today, and he asked that we take it off the agenda until he's back from his trip and we have a chance to sit down and talk. So I did let the staff over at Nexsite know that, that we were going to meet in the next week or two, and it would, there'd be an updated the July meeting for everyone. The second item is about the Pepper Park Retail Association membership. I did attend, along with Therese, via Zoom. We all had a Zoom meeting yesterday. It was the first kickoff meeting. One of the items that was discussed that will be coming up is September 23rd, and that'll be the Pepper Park Fest. So we're starting to, they'll be starting to work on that. And a monthly calendar will be coming out as well, with just different events that those groups are having, as well as other members of the chamber. And I'm very excited to be here, and it's been a great first board meeting. Thank you.
Well, we're delighted, and we hope there isn't too much buyer's remorse.
How many members are in this Pepper Park?
That I don't know off the top of my head. Therese, do you know how many members were there? I would estimate about a dozen. Pardon me?
A dozen? That's a great number.
Yeah.
That's a great number.
Thank you.
Any questions for the administrator on her report? Okay, then we can move to agenda item number 10, the clerk's report.
Thank you.
Ms. Penny Talapa.
Thank you. Sexual harassment training time is coming up again, so everyone will be receiving those emails. We're going with the same company that we used before, which is Zywayd Learning, so you see an email from them, it's legitimate. And I also want to put a reminder out that we're going to continue with the Know-Be-For security awareness training, so when you see those coming, those are legitimate also. Trustee Schaller has been really great about forwarding the emails that he's concerned about, and was like, is this really not, you know? So if you need to do that, send them to me, and I will let you know. So that's about it. Thank you.
Questions for?
Excuse me, questions for the clerk?
Yeah, I have a question, Lisa.
Please.
So all employers in the state of Illinois, the employees have to take this too. So I have taking it. Do I just need to turn in a certificate to you? I mean, I could do a redo class, of course.
You don't have to turn in a certificate, because we get that information that it's been completed.
Well, I understand on the system, but I've already taken it from my company.
Oh, so in place of?
Yeah, so, maybe you can look into that, how you do it.
I'll look into that. I was going to mention that to the administrator. We'll discuss it.
I know I'm slow, and sometimes I need remedial training.
I'll look into it for sure. Okay.
Okay, any further questions for the clerk? If not, we can move to agenda item 11, reports of the standing committees. Branding and Communications, Trustee Van Ryan.
Thank you, President Richardson. It's great to be with all of you remotely today. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. So I'll keep it brief. On the LinkedIn front, we've had some wonderful posts over the last month, celebrating Memorial Day. I had the pleasure of attending both the 5K walk that was hosted by the veteran for Great Barrington Shores, as well as the Memorial Day Ceremony. Both were outstanding, excellent participation, and wonderful way to celebrate the weekend. So we were able to acknowledge some of these events on LinkedIn, as well as the changing of the guard, if you will, featuring both Karen and Sharon. And we boosted our followers on LinkedIn up to 135. That's up seven from last month at this time, and hopefully the growth will continue with more great stories coming out around the concert coming up and so forth. And as Sharon mentioned, I did have the pleasure of tuning in to the chamber meeting with some of our businesses. It was just amazing to hear the collaboration amongst the business owners and representatives complimenting each other on the services they provide, and, and just excited about the opportunity there. And Andy and I will be meeting with Suzanne Carr, who leads the Barrington Chamber in early July, to talk about how we can further collaborate and really maximize that relationship that we're driving from a village perspective. That's all from me. Thank you.
Are there questions for Trustee Van Ryan? Okay, 11B, Economic Development. Trustee Burke is absent this evening. I'll ask the administrator if she has any comments that would fill in for him. If not, no problem.
I don't at this time.
Thank you. 11C, External Relations. I attended the Community Leaders of America Spring Policy Conference last month in, near Dallas. It was in McKinney, and these are, this is the Republican Mayor's Group, and there's a Democratic Mayor's Group, and then there's the Non-Partisan National League of Cities and U.S. Conference of Mayors. And it was, it was, it was really terrific. We talked a lot about the drug crisis and mental health and violence and solutions for those things. You know, some of these conferences, and then there was, there was a lot on outsourcing of different services. A lot of the refuse collection industry isn't there. You know, they've got a big problem with capacity, and certainly we're seeing it with our contract here. So it was, it was interesting. They're all pretty good about, a lot of us have known each other for a while, sharing the notes, so as we looked at, it's kind of what we were saying to the treasurer about Dr. Anderson and Ms. Sheehan at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington on water issues. We've built a pretty good network around the country, so we have others we can benchmark off of, and some of these issues are. The other thing, on a lighter note, Congresswoman Beth Van Dooyen from Texas, near Dallas, her congressional district in the Dallas metroplex, is the former mayor of Irving, Texas. And I told her she obviously couldn't tolerate an honest job, so she got elected to Congress instead and left the job of real work, which is being a mayor. And she's a delight, and I, she, I'm hoping to get her up here to be a speaker for one of the Illinois Municipal League or Lake County Municipal League, because the move from being a mayor where accountability is assigned in real time immediately to being one of 435 is a big, is a big change. And I all do respect, I worked in Congress, my wife worked in Congress, my older girl works there now, I have a lot of respect for members of Congress. But it's not, it's not impossible to poke fun at a friend once in a while, so. And I will be attending next month, as I mentioned, the UK Local Government Association, and they've asked me to talk about, you guys are going to love this, about the use of humor in running village board meetings. Because a number of these mayors have gotten to know me, and they said, your meetings must be a hoot. And I said, well, I think they're funny. I'm not sure my colleagues always agree. So if you guys get calls from England, you'll know what they're about.
Talking about motorcade.
Yeah, that's right. You don't talk about the Irish to the English, I've learned that. I don't wear my shirt that says Irish when I'm there. We can move to agenda item 11D, Finance and Human Resources and Administration, Trustee Hayes.
Well, I only have comments tonight. First of all, Sharon, welcome.
Thank you.
First board meeting. It was very clear you just stepped in and ran, so welcome.
Thank you.
And Peggy, nice, fantastic work. I'm sure you're so happy you're through this.
Oh, yeah.
Now we got to execute against it. You did a good job tonight.
And now we're starting you out. It doesn't have to be that.
Yeah, I know, it never ends, right? But no, thank you for all the hard work you put in there. It's much appreciated. That is the update for me.
Questions for Trustee Hayes? Then we can move to 11E, Roads and Infrastructure, Trustee Shaw Moser.
Thank you, President Richardson. As Peggy had mentioned, the, the big spend down, the major projects, paving work's been completed as of June 9th. Landscaping work, topsoil, grass along the edges of the pavement, that will be, that started actually yesterday, and should be done at the end of the week. Driveways, well, will occur also this week. Secondly, there's a drainage improvement project pending on Bar Court. And so our engineers, HR Green, they're proposing permanent repair, which includes installation of additional drainage structures and pipes to connect the sub outlets, and we think we should be able to, to get that within, within budget, what was already contracted out with Arrow Road Construction. That is everything on my report.
Are there questions for Trustee Shaw Moser? And thank you for that, and thank you for your willingness to serve with the SWALCO as the alternate for the village. I don't think it's going to be a time burden. Karen attended, I think all of them, and Sharon, I suspect will attend a number of them as well, but it's nice to leave the box not empty. And it relates to infrastructure, so thank you for your willingness to do that.
Sure, you're welcome.
11F, Public Safety, Trustee Schaller.
Thank you, President Richardson. As Lieutenant Scott Kirk makes his way to the podium there, or you can stand right there and yell at us.
I guess I can stay here today.
It's easier, the microphone works over there. What's happening with Lake County Sheriff's Department, including yourself?
Oh, not too much. We recently had a, there was a press release from a case that originated in Lake Barrington. If anybody has any questions or concerns, or did not see that press release, I can forward that to you. Additionally, there's been some small moves within the command structure, and currently I'm on afternoon shift at the end of the month. I will be going back to day shift, so we'll see how that works out, but I'll be available during the day if anybody needs anything. Obviously, in the evening, if I'm not working, I have a cell phone, or if you need emergency assistance, obviously we always have Command on 24/7, so. With that, I don't have anything else to share tonight.
Good, appreciate it. Thank you very kindly. The K-9 unit of the Sheriff's Department has been getting a fair amount of publicity recently.
Yeah, and I was, actually, I was going to mention, would that be something the board would like, on one evening, a visit from one of our K-9 officers?
I'd love it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We could probably work that out, if I am able to work that out, which I should be able to, maybe we could have them come up at the beginning of the meeting.
Sure. Yeah.
That'd be terrific.
All right, I'll work on that.
And to make it convenient for them, we can do a committee with a hole, you know, ahead of time, and, you know, it's, in the summer months, it's nice, we can be outside.
Outside, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, we'll work on that.
Very good. Thank you.
The only thing I want to add on this is, please thank Sheriff Idleberg for his attendance at Administrator, former Administrator Dalton Ryan's retirement reception last month. It was very nice of him. He lives in Zion, and he came to Bear, Lake Barrington Hills. You couldn't get farther apart in this county, and he made a long drive, and it was noted noted and greatly appreciated by all the past and present village leaders who were in attendance.
I will let him know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise, I got a good opportunity to speak with him, and was very impressed, and he was interested in our community, and invited him to come back anytime. Yeah, with that. And as far as activity for the Sheriff's Department, as Lieutenant Kirk has said, you know, we're not, we live in a, in a pretty safe part of Lake County, but still, there's a domestic battery incident, a forward card, which Lieutenant Kirk had indicated happened in LBS, a little incident, possession of adult use of cannabis in a motor vehicle. That happens, you know, it happens all over the county. And then a couple of harassment by telephone and other disorderly conduct things that do take place. So you do see the squad going through Lake County and, or Lake Barrington and the village of Lake North Barrington, and they're there for a reason. They're there because that's our police department, and we appreciate what they do for us each day. The Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, you're aware, you should be aware of the fact that, number one, they have a new chief, Scott Matisse, but also Barrington Countryside does not have, the personnel, for the most part, are under contract with a company called PSI, they're out of Bensonville. And actually, the Barrington Countryside is the largest contractor with PSI. But that said, it's interesting, because they're now down nine current open positions in the department. It's tough, it's competitive, and because of pensions and various other things in the other departments, sometimes it's, it's that competitive too. So they're, they're constantly trying to make sure that they're at full speed with the new station down on Barrington Road, south of Barrington. Obviously, a lot more personnel, but it's, they've responded quite frequently to fires and incidents in our area, including Lake Barrington Woods, which they're in quite frequently. We did have their election of officers, and Keith Hanson is reelected president of the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District. And likewise, the Wakanda Fire Department did have a reelection of officers. They all got reelected, and they were looking to get rid of one of their support vehicles. So if you want to buy a support vehicle, it's available from the Wakanda Fire Department. Basically, that's in my report. Thank you.
Are there, excuse me, are there questions for Trustee Schaller? Then 11G, Open Space and Special Events, Trustee Perkins.
Thank you very much, President Richardson. I am, of course, just going to talk about the special concerts for the summer at Friar Farm. We have, they're starting, they're all on the third Thursday, and I know it's technically the fourth Thursday, but we're one day off here. So the first one is June 15. They will all be 6:30 to 8:30. Our first one is this Thursday, June 15. Everyone, get your picnic blankets and bottles of wine and cheese and crackers, and come out and enjoy some 60s music. The band is called Pipe Dream, and it's, like I said, 60s music. It should be, hopefully, a dry and lovely evening. Might want to bring a little Bugs Bunny, though, you never know. Then we will also have another one on July 20. No Filter. It's a 70s and 80s band of some local District 220 parents that have, that, that do this, have this, this little band. So they play like 70s and 80s rock, and, you know, they're a cover band. Then also, on August 17, it's just the day before school starts, and we've got Mr. D, Mr. DeMonico, our very own, he's, he lives in, President Richardson and my neighborhood. And so we, we get to spend a lot of time with him.
And the nephew of the DeMonicos who owned the restaurant in 14.
The nephew of the DeMonicos, the DeMonicos Restaurant, and he's our music teacher at Countryside Elementary. So he's, he's very well known. I suspect that he will have a lot of little kids, you know, former students, and lots of little kids out there that will be excited to see him and want to sing with him. So it's going to, that one's going to be very, very family oriented. So he's just a really great guy, so be sure to put that one on your calendar. But this Thursday, okay, everyone, pack up your things and be ready, be ready for a good time.
Do you realize I was born in 1964? So you got the 60s right. I don't remember any of the music from that, that year, but, yeah.
I stopped listening to music after 1960.
Yeah, I know.
It'll, you know, I was born in the 60s too, so.
Hmm. See?
I'm rubbing off on you.
You young people, I tell you.
Yes, it will be. We'll see you there. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. We're grateful. Agenda item 12, there is no old business. 13, no ordinances. 14, no resolutions. 15, no new business. 16, this is the second opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the village board. There is no one here, so no one is seeking recognition. There is no need for a closed session. There is no other business. So Chair would like, under agenda item 19, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Trustee Schaller, may I have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Perkins. All those in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.